Go ahead and call us up and say the council needs your orders. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilman Morgan Jackson to give us a question.
Good evening. Dear Lord, we just come to you, Lord God, thank you for your many blessings. Lord God, thank you for being king of kings and lord of lords. Lord God, thank you for being the great I am. Lord God, thank you for being excellent in all your ways. Lord God, we thank you for being true to hold your heart, the one that is always there. To oversee, missing the banner of victory over the city of Zellman. Lord God, we thank you for being, being Jehovah's testing, our righteousness. Lord God, we just thank you for being Jesus all by yourself. We thank you for being our savior and our healer. Lord God, we bring our minds, our bodies, our thoughts, our ideas, we bring everything in subjection to you when you're right now. We do our rumors to you. Lord God, we ask you to use us, that we may be fitted for your use, Lord God. Make us and shape us into the men and women of God that you will have to represent your city in this season. Lord God, we will be careful always to give your name the glory and praises to, and Jesus may be with you.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Morgan. I was looking for a school of discovery, FPLA, supposed to be doing nothing, pledge allegiance to God. Let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with equal will, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Bowie.
Present.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Present.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas. Ready. Councilwoman Johnson.
Sure. Okay, stated before, we do have a four, the character trait for the march is patient. Accepting a difficult situation without giving a deadline to remove it. Council members, you heard before, you have a September tenth agenda. At this time, the chair of entertainment wants me to approve the regular September tenth agenda. I have most on the floor, Councilman Johnson. Second. Councilman Morgan. Any further questions? Comments? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, council members, agenda was approved, now let's move. Now to the consent agenda, we're going to remove item number five, the next council meeting, I need to get some additional information on the invoice. Consent item number one, to approve to retire officer Harry Tusk's gun and badge due to another retirement out of twenty-two years of public service and eighteen years of the cell police department. Consent item number two, to approve first read a retail bill and table line off premise for pure food market. Consent item number three, to approve the first read a lounge retail class one license for a slow bar and line. Consent item number four, to approve child sale code and strike L S A to pay and order services for certain other city right away at the shade fitness for twenty-five hundred dollars of fees coming from our employees, from President Bowie and Councilwoman Youngblood for a total of five thousand dollars. Consent item number five, to carry those. Consent item number six, to approve Dallas County F contract for a hundred thirty thousand dollars for eight bed spaces, but this is not fifty dollars per bed space paid. The original eight bed space, thirty thousand dollars going to the detention center, something one hundred thousand dollars. We'd like to thank Chief Green for making this recommendation. And last but not least, consent item number seven, to approve to increase about ten thousand dollars, nine out of one, sixty-two hundred fifty-one, six forty-nine, for tree trimming and stump grounds within the city itself. At this time, the chair of entertainment wants me to replace all six items on the consent agenda and move forward with the vote. I have most on the floor, Councilman Johnson. Do you have a second? Second, Councilman Morgan.
This is discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Mr. President, I would like to respectfully request that item six be removed for further discussion. I apologize for not being here on my last night, I did have some questions when you sent the agreement on last week, just a couple of questions I would like to...
All right, we can move it, it is a brand, Chief Green, forward. Okay, we'll move item number six.
Number seven, that's gonna be citywide.
Citywide, correct, yeah. I rode for about two hours on Saturday, throughout the city, far as Petrie's Avenue, Dallas Avenue, Madison Park.
Crescent Hill.
Crescent Hill.
Okay, good.
Marie Foster, also Petrie that you requested. All right, at this time, the chair of entertainment, most I think, Councilman Johnson made the motion, second, now Councilwoman Bolin. Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson. How's things on in your life, my brother, December? Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I will say, okay, all right, the consent agenda says, I'm gonna ask Chief Green, if you will please come forward, Officer Tusk, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I really don't need this because I have a certain big mouth. But I spoke with the council at work session yesterday regarding the retirement of Officer Tusk, Harry Tusk. I requested that the council waive the twenty-five years Officer Tusk has been granted in medical retirement by Retirement Systems of Alabama. He served twenty-two years as a dedicated and committed law enforcement officer. And at this particular time, I would like to present him, since the council has already given their approval, with his gun and his badge for twenty-two years. Thanks still for allowing me to protect and serve and do my job. I know a lot of people didn't like me, you know, didn't play favors or anything, you know, true to my job, and I tell young people to love what you do, and anything that you do, that you go out for, always be dedicated to your job, always be dedicated to yourself and respect yourself. Anything that you have to turn around and that you have to look back and forth, always complete your goal and your task. Mine's got cut short for medical, but we still thank the Lord that I'm here, and I did complete it and I have... There's a lot that I'm thankful for, a lot of people I know I helped, and a lot of people I know, it's coming back to me because I have so many that I see that actually come and tell me, I appreciate what you did for me, even if it was taking them to jail, you know, for a reason, it wasn't just for the beat out here doing anything. I wish that I could finish my three years so I can still help the police department out and do as much as I can do, but like I said, you know, medical right now and everything, but I still thank the city itself for making my second home and giving me the opportunity to do everything I can do.
Thank you. I have most on the floor.
I can say a lot, but I'm gonna be brief because I'm assuming others want to say something. I told you this away from the microphone, and I'm gonna tell you publicly, thank you so much. They didn't have to like you, but the thing about it is, they respected you. You were well respected. I mean, you talked to anybody that you taken in, they were like, hey, he hard, but he was right to that end, he did his job, and they respected that, and I respect you for that, for being one of the good ones. It was our pleasure to help you send your daughter abroad to a totally different country and for her to be an ambassador for us. That means you set an example at home as well, so anyway, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You have always exemplified Officer Tusk, what the cell police department, depending on where it should be. I know that the leaving is hard, is hard for you, but I want you to know that I will appreciate your service, as well, and I want you to be that officer that is coming up with the ranks, will have the same, the simplification of a police officer as you have in the city of Zellman, I wish you with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Morgan Jackson.
Officer Tusk, I'm gonna be really brief, I just wanted to tell you that out of all the years, we've worked together, I've never heard everyone say anything bad. You were absolutely, you made me laugh, you made me mad, but you were always, as they have previously stated, respectful and favorable, and that's all that you can ask. You are the epitome of an officer, and we honor you to that, and we thank you for serving us, I'm afraid that you would take on some mentorship by young officers, as you have done in the past, and continue to do that, and continue to encourage and speak that we have respect for all people, in any situation, just like you did. It didn't matter that you were arrested, we treated them with respect, we called them by their name, Mr. and sir, and you spoke to them, thank you and no thank you, and it meant a lot to a lot of people, and to me seeing you working with them, I appreciate it.
Thank you again for your service and dedication, Officer Tusk.
Chief, thank you for, thank you for asking me to go out and ask. I wanted to know, you said thirty thousand dollars for the detention center was our previous deal that we've been asked about, or this is something ongoing, that we'll pay thirty thousand dollars each year?
This is previous, this is about previous.
This is a one-time deal?
The one-time.
In the contract, it says, it's the city's share of our annual operating expenses, or they're for the juvenile detention center, Perry Von, sorry, they're requesting that we begin doing this annually? No more questions?
Really didn't, I really didn't understand where the thirty thousand dollars country came from.
Right, I thought it was from...
Now, for the last twenty years, we've been paying two hundred thousand dollars for them to house our inmates, and when they brought the thirty thousand off the field, I wasn't really aware of where that amount came from.
I am aware, Mr. President, that they're, much like the jail beds, that they have a certain amount of beds, do you know how many beds they cover? I guess we need to know if this is just for the two years ago, and we won't have this amount going forward, or if it's an ongoing...
I thought it was for two years.
Okay, because we put it here as the city's annual share, annual share, an annual of a year, and I didn't want to agree to something that we weren't agreeing to. Thank you, Chief.
If I extended that, the hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah, good heavens.
Go ahead.
Always when you walk away, huh? Chief, you were here on last night, but I'm not sure you were here when I went over my agenda, item of my off the alleged hacked computer system on the city. Were you still here at that time?
I heard a part of your presentation, but I was on my way out.
Okay, I want to share with you an extension number out of the police department, you know, I mentioned that, some IT friends of mine, I talked to some IT friends of mine, and so, one of the people that I know, but not that person that I spoke with, they were giving a call and saying they were calling on behalf of the SPD. I do have the extension number that came from the SPD, I want to give you that extension number, so that, and it happened today at two forty-four P M, and I want to make sure that this person is safe, and, and I know that you probably didn't give the order like that, but they were calling on behalf of the SPD concerning the topic that I had on last night. I want to give you the extension number, I'm gonna write it down, give you the extension number, if you could look that up and see who was at that extension at two forty-four P M, and this person that called me to say that they called them, may need a little protection, I don't know, but I want you to look into that if you don't mind, Chief.
Any other questions for the chief? Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Are we gonna move forward, or are you jail run track?
My recommendation, even if the chief said he didn't understand why the thirty thousand was in here, that we need to, I mean, it's a year contract, we paid thirty thousand this year, saving if it was from last year, but we need, we need to negotiate, but we need to know exactly why we have this thirty thousand dollars being here, and if it's for a amount of beds or just our share of costs.
Go ahead, Captain. I was gonna move forward, what's the pledge on the other side?
I was gonna ask, yes, time, with the hard time, I beg to... And the thing that, I was appreciative of that there was time until both that year, the fact that they had, and the pay. Also, the reduction of two hundred thousand, the year was reduced to a thousand, a hundred thousand, to give us some lead rates.
Yes.
Terms of, for year to year, what is the actual cost?
Yes.
But since the timing is of essence, and part that we're in, I don't have a problem with, since we're up against the...
All right, do have most on the floor. Move forward. Second. We got most, putting the most on the floor, Councilman Johnson. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, second, Councilman Morgan. Any further discussion? Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, with the understanding that this thirty thousand dollar deal was from a deal to you.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman...
All right, the motion passed by George, but at this time, without too announcements from council members, are there any announcements you would like to bring forth from the board?
Just on, on campus, I want to just give a shout out to the, the, God, E7, um, God, True E7. True E7, yes, but outstanding event that took place this past weekend, it was awesome, a lot of gentlemen came out, the committee did an awesome job, I think it's great for being part of it, and Ms. Toby Johnson, which I think is here along with others, there's so many, I just can't name them all. Also, I do want to give Councilwoman Thomas some love, she came out and helped pick up and apply the bags, things to the water at the particular time, along with the rest of Ray Brown and Ms. Awanda, the crew that came out and cut the field, in other words, there's so many, it took everybody to make it successful, it was awesome, it was good, no incidents took place, kids had fun, and also, I want to congratulate Mr. George Sally, he won first and second prize in the Fisher Tournament, and also, Mr. Daniel Bennett that won the first and second prize in the Fisher Tournament, but they got some tip and cash prize on there as well, so that was some good things that took place over the past week and so, and, but then, when you work together, a lot can get done, and I'm so grateful that them two events that took place turned out great, no incident and everything was beautiful, and that basis, I don't want to say this one, but I just want to thank everybody for coming out and standing there.
Thank you, Captain. Doctor, any other, coming forward?
Councilwoman Shaw. On September eighteenth, at six thirty, War Six will be, will be held today, and they will watch a presentation about the cell police department. This is in conjunction with the people in the seated aspect, now, one man involved has been for the city for a meeting and seating. I hope that bringing that service of War Six, military power, so that they can understand and learn the value of neighborhood watch programs, because the way crime is solved, it's not by any of the talent, by the men and women in blue, but it's by citizens as well. Citizens want to, and I was reporting, you're not telling your family, you're sending one of the good citizens of the city when it's a crime here to be, and that's what we're helping, bringing this person to court room and getting some justification for the victims that they perpetrated on. So, at six thirty on September eighteenth, I hope that citizens of War Six turn out a massive amount, so that the neighborhood watch can be set up in Smokey City area, Wilson Department area, neighborhood area, the whole company of War Six needs to be accountable in the neighborhood watch program, and I'm hoping that other of War Six will be doing the same thing. Our men and women of the cell police department need to help, especially with this garbage area, infestation, I'm on that garbage thing again, these people who dispose of garbage in around our city are criminals and they need to be held accountable for. Over Shamet Avenue, if you interact with them, you just go over there and look. I was thinking about setting up one thing so I can catch this person, what they have done, they're just shaking and they're downright criminal, and what I've been told, it's like this all over the city, and we, council, we have a responsibility to eradicate this problem.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Jackson.
Good evening. I would like to, you know, Saturday, September fourteenth, will be the day that we have our stop the violence in our community with the youth. It was gonna take place at our church in our community, Mount Zion Community Baptist Church at twelve o'clock, but we had to counsel because one of our strong community leaders has been with me many years, and she's about the, maybe about the fifth person that has transitioned her life over to, to the Lord, and right now, that's why we had to counsel because of, her funeral will be Saturday, and she was a good supporter in War Seven, her name was Sanobi Robertson. Anything that War Seven needed, or anything that we needed, she was disabled, but she always took part of leadership in War Seven, so we had to counsel our neighbor. We will have it October, about the second week in October, this is something that we, allegedly that we want to continue to have, where we involve our youth and invite them out to know that gun violence and fighting is not the way to go. Also, I want to say this too, in War Seven, we went around in our areas, we bagged up a lot of garbage, like Johnny LaShaw said, that Councilwoman LaShaw said, that each council person is the person that represent their war, it's our duty to make sure that we work with the people in our war to control this garbage. We went around and we backed up garbage by four sections, and we have tons of garbage that we're going to, well, I will be paying out of my pocket to load this up on a trailer, and we're gonna take it to the landfill in Sarves. We have took our time up each week going around with people coming into our community. We have, we're working on, we're getting tags now, and people are calling, trying to get people to come out right then to catch these people that are driving up, throwing bags or garbage, and bill, it bill up in your community, and it created, it created rats, raccoon, possum, everything, so we have some good people that have been working with us in our, in our war, you know, to take time to go out and bag this garbage up, because, you know, we're doing this as volunteer, we're not getting paid to do this, it's because we live in that community, and I want people to take pride, because you see us out there bent over with a mask on and gloves on, we picking up households out there, other people bringing to our board and, and throw them city value.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilwoman Jackson.
First of all, I want to say to my council members to keep us in your prayers, in little joy as you walk in, we lost our beloved pet yesterday, and that's why I was here, Skipper who's been with us six years, remember the first one that was in seven, and she kept calling, and so she was taking it really hard, so I stayed home with her, and daddy coming to the rescue, wanted to buy another one, and she said, no, I never want another pet, and so, so pray for us, because it's been really hard, he was a member of our family, and some of you all know how that is. Little Free Award Three, we're going to have Saturday, September the twenty-first, twenty nineteen, at West Village Church of the Nazarene, that's at two oh three Hopsom Street, Salem, Alabama, so we'll be over in Cigar Village cleaning up, that's going to be on Saturday, September the first, we'll meet at seven A M. and conclude at ten A M. In addition, War Three, we'll have our reseat meeting this, Monday, September the thirtieth, at six P M. at the Cell Performance Arts Center, where we generally have our meetings, so please come out and be a part of that meeting. Also, I would like to make a announcement that, as many of you all know, it's National Recovery Month, SAMSA has sponsored that to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and substance abuse disorders, or substance uses orders, and as a part of that, we're going to be here in our seventh annual addiction and the law training to the city of Zellman, thank you to this council that's partnered with the Dallas County Commission, the Dallas County Policy Council, and Dallas County Court Services to bring this event once again in our city, and you all are invited to come out, there will be CLE hours approved by the bar to our attorneys and also to law enforcement, we have approved CLE hours as well. As a part of National Recovery Month, we have a day of service, Councilwoman Shaw, we're actually cleaning up, I think my office is in your ward, Ward City, twelve oh three Volley. And so we'll start there, and we're going to work Washington and Field Pot and all those areas, I had someone from a school, Payne School actually asked me to come down in that area, in the alley, and do that, and so we're going to separate, if you have, are in recovery, or you have a family member in recovery, or you just want to support someone in recovery, we ask that you please come out and be a part of this event, it's our day of service that we have every September, if you've listened to the whole radio station this morning, you had some of our participants all talking about just how helpful recovery has been in their lives, I thank you to Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Benjamin, who has been very active and very supportive to this event each year, and so we ask that you all come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilman Randolph, and Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President, it's that time of year again, singing Sister Prong.
Hey, singing Sister Prong.
Anyway, City of Zellman and the Zell House Authority presented the Singing Sister Prong two thousand nineteen, it'll be Saturday, September twenty-first, from twelve to two o'clock P M. at the Convention Center, and it's free admission, and this year, we got a live band. They don't do like that at Zell, huh? But we got a live band this year and free food and all of this stuff, and we trying to have a decent time so the singers can come out, you know, and make it back home before nightfall, so we just only doing the two hours, and also, our additional sponsors, we got some sponsors come out of my, I'm out of Alabama, called Be Low Properties in PMI, Rimbridge, it's an organization that, and really took profit, so they're looking to buy some property themselves, and, 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 they didn't give me five thousand dollars, but I took what they gave, though, of Councilman Johnson. They didn't give me five thousand dollars, but I appreciate what they gave.
Long day in towards the five.
But I want to thank Chad and his staff, because they always help us each year, and I really want to thank him, I, he's recovered from surgery, but I just want to thank him, you know, for all that he does for our community, you know, and you ask for him, he don't, he don't turn nobody down, so what we ask you, well, everybody that called the Singing Sister So, what we asking for everybody that called the Singing Sisters and invited them to the Singing Sisters' Prom, and we gonna have a good time. We gonna crown the king and queen. We do it every year. Hope Salem Time Jump put us in the front page again, on the Sunday paper, on the front page. Yeah, the big paper.
It's Saturday now.
Oh, it's Saturday. Okay, yeah, Saturday.
It's the weekend.
Week, weekend. But like I said, we gonna have a good time. And like I said, just want to invite everybody, and we always have a good time. And I want to thank our DJ, Mr. John Saw, he, he, but why the band not playing? Because, you know, a band, when they get, they had to take a break, so when they take a break, this song will play. So, just inviting everybody to come out. Thank you.
Thank you for a great event. Spirit here today, Councilman Yelena. To the rich y'all here today. Councilwoman Yelena.
Mr. President, I hope you indulge me. This should really come under my committee reports, but I've got to get back to Iowa tonight, so I'm going to let me take two little items out of order under these reports, but I really don't want to be that unrelieved. I have a resolution that I would like the council to vote on in voteable report. It is to expand, we have the opportunity to expand the opportunity zone. And if you all, I think you guys understand what the opportunity zone is, it is mainly to help areas, particularly poverty and life, that were hit especially hard by the economic downturn two thousand eight and have been unable to recover. They, the Ward Eight and part of Ward Six, and that's part of Sam Ward, are in the opportunity zone. And I could not understand why they left Councilwoman Jackson out and didn't take it on across over the front on Ward Three. But anyway, we have the opportunity to direct it by that. I'm asking that we extend it, just like we did the brick grant for the Salem Redevelopment Authority, and go from the, what was the former side of the Beach Creek Arena to the Elliot Speed Arena and cover the whole riverfront. That will give us one of the longest functioning riverfronts in the country. And that's, that's basically what I want to do. I've got this resolution. I'll be glad to read it if y'all want it, or shall I read it? Or no? Okay, just look at it. It just says that, you know, has all those whereas in the hands. Essentially, that's what I just said. So, that will, and that encompasses the places, you know, behind where Arch Revive is trying to do. And that block where Arch Revive is, I think that would make a big difference if people could get some of those places and have some assemblies. So, I figured Councilwoman Jackson would like it. I hadn't had an opportunity to talk to you. It's one of, that's one of the things I just found out about this week, talking to Henry, and then one of the things I've got some, some insight about it all, this economic development conference. So, you're welcome. It will help a lot. Yes, I'm making this my statement.
Okay, that motion on the floor, Councilwoman Youngblood saying, Councilwoman Youngblood, discussing, Councilwoman Yelena.
Councilwoman, are you saying that we now have the authority to extend the opportunity zones? I attended the Montgomery of the Opportunity Zones, and the man that was facilitating basically said this was given to the powers that be in all of your cities, and it's a done deal. So, is now, have they reopened?
Well, it takes an act of Congress, but for whatever reasons there are, we have been, and I don't know if it's other people, but the, I don't know of anybody here that was considered. Mr. Thompson does not know if that was considered. But, you know, so, but anyway, we have the opportunity to have an input. We don't change it, but this is a resolution, and we recommend the expansion.
So, are we recommending it to the facilitators of the opportunity zone?
We're recommending it to our, essentially, our Congresswoman. We recommend it to the people, but it takes an act of Congress to check the opportunity zone.
It's just a recommendation.
Yeah. We're just recommending that it be on.
Ultimately, the way it goes is Governor Kay Ivey went through a deck and solicited for any recommendations or referrals based on, not saying that nothing would be guaranteed, but if there were some areas that were overlooked or that we may need to do a second look on that, it will require any city or area to solicit this type of information to, none of those pretenses. So, that's basically what the.
We got a recommendation on the floor, Councilwoman Youngblood, Saturday, Councilwoman Anderson, in the following session. Roll.
President Bull, Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yakla.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
President Muzi, yes, it is.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Yelena.
Thank you very much, Council, Council. I just wanted to inquire about the wood chipper that we had done a resolution about, and I submitted the end noise from this show. Yeah, we voted quite a while back. There's a resolution to do that. And I wanted to go back, see back then, that done, get that purchased, and see it. So, that's, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Let's follow us.
Councilwoman Shaw, then Councilwoman Yelena. I wish the attorney was here. We wanted to acquire wherever we have fixed assets, R.F.P. This way to view this, I can give us a look in and roll it up because we need to go here and get it in place so that we can charge the company this time, give us some good ideas of what our assets are. And it's a shame we don't even know what our business.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
At this point in time, we received draft of the R.F.P. this morning, I think it was? Was it this morning? Well, I, I did get mine until this morning, and I know that they were making some small changes in coming up with a date to release it, but it should be able to be published within the next week, I think.
Could you give us some assurance from the attorney that we all will, could you give the attorney to make sure we're moving at a fast, fast pace? I would, I would hope we would have this in place by now.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how, but I'm serious. We asked that this is a serious matter, and we need to get this in place so that we can have a good understanding as to what we got and what we don't have.
I've confirmed.
I think we have three bids.
I think he has a meeting, and he's going to my meetings. But I'll follow up with him on tomorrow. I did make a call in the staff room, but I didn't hear that from him.
Also, I would ask attorney, John, send us an email to go to update my timeline and step by step, when we move forward.
I don't know. We didn't get it done on the floor. Our budget was only twenty-five thousand. We need to get an additional budget, so that is a question.
Yes, sir.
I want us to be careful with the next year because we didn't, is that twenty-five thousand? So, let's get this in before October.
Councilwoman Yelena.
Also, I wanted to let the city of Salem know that Morgan Academy and hopefully Salem High, the coach, is trying to get the athletes at Salem High and Morgan Academy want to team up. They, they agree to keep the stadium clean. They're going to team up with the school. Two schools get together, and every month, they'll go out and we'll keep the stadium cleaned up, that area over there. On September the twentieth, we'll be meeting at the State Stadium again.
All right. Thank you. All right. About to this, this presentation, Councilwoman Yelena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, Councilwoman Youngblood, would you be able to stay for this presentation because there's a gentleman that comes out of this presentation, he may want to stick around more, he's an inviting guest. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a mirror colored president here.
It's my girlfriend, Matt.
Mr. President, come down and help me as you usually do with the administrative straight up assistant. I'll be here today. Ms. Ellison, do you mind taking a picture? And Salvatore Journal and Self-Post Herald, these are young people that are coming up. We like to put them in the paper. They do good things. So, we've had this on the agenda for some weeks, and Ms. Dill was not feeling well at that time, and the trophy had not arrived the next week. And if she's still here, no, no, she's still in. She did arrive today, and she came and was not feeling well again today, and I think that the ambulance probably took, they did. So, the ambulance came to get her today. So, I hate, I hate that she won't see the presentation. She is actually the facilitator of this. So, we had our annual youth conference, and we always have the Bible Bowl competition, and we always bring the champion here to present them with the trophy. Ms. Dill is responsible for the trophy. She, she fundraises for everything else, and her daughter, Imprevil, brings the trophy down. So, the trophy has arrived. We want, we have two of the four winners here. We're going to bring up Ms. Jada and Ms. Kalentia. Stand there so they can get a nice picture of you for the paper because we love to put our young people in the paper when they do good things. So, Jada has already been awarded her prize. She is the fourth place winner. She is a first-timer because now she's finally old enough to come to the youth conference, okay? She finally made it to sixth grade. She's at a new school, School of Discovery. She's the fourth place winner. This tournament is a three-day tournament, and you have to participate every single day. And these two young people are dead. There are two people that come between them, second and third place, who are not able to be here. That is Precious Vaughn, who is ill, and Michael Evans, who is at Dallas County High School with his caregivers from Councilwoman Thomas's church. So, Ms. Jada, we're going to give you the opportunity. We've already presented Jada with her award bookbag full of nice things, and we're going to give you an opportunity to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sixth grade. This is what we do in sixth grade. Y'all know it.
So, while Miss Benjamin, I had a good time. I learned more about the Bible. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Jada, for attending. We going to be having that for the second year on next year. We look forward to it. And so, there's a, there's a champion that gets a bookbag full of stuff like flash drives and those things that your parent might not get you. We get those kinds of things and fill it up in the bookbag. And there's a trophy that's always presented before the media, before the news, because, hey, that's what we want to do with our young people, to say to you that we appreciate you, we see what you are doing, and we want to acknowledge that you are doing it. Ms. Kalentia is also a first-timer. She is a senior at Dallas County High School, and smart as a whip. I think you won the last competition too with Ms. G.G., was you or your sister?
It might have been my sister.
Your sister. Her sister is here. We, we had a whole mess thing going on too, and they, y'all answer some stuff I cannot answer. So, thank you for that. And she is the Bible Bowl twenty nineteen Bible Bowl champion of the. Now, get a nice picture for the paper.
Yes.
Get it in the paper. Come on around, paper, get a good shot of her for the newspaper.
Yes.
All right, look this way, please.
Y'all got both of them, right? Okay. Come on in, Jada. All right. When y'all, when we finish up here, make sure you go and give them the correct spelling number nine. We're going to give you the opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I just want to say first, thank God because without you, I'm going to have the capability of knowing the knowledge. I want to thank my opponents for making me work hard to learn everything. And last but not least, I want to thank everybody that had a hand in youth council because it really gave me the opportunity to get out of the house and this stuff.
And they were willing to get out of the house. Like I said, both of these are first timers to the youth conference, and we look forward to having you back. That little red bag will go to you, and Ms. Dill will probably give you all a call when she gets out of the hospital, on my own circumstances, that she will. So, thank you very much for coming. Council, we appreciate you for keeping these young people in the budget. You know, budget things matter. We appreciate you all for keeping them in. But again, another thing, Councilwoman Yelena.
I do want to say something. Ladies, I'm, I'm proud of y'all, and this is important. The things you're doing is important. And y'all may, even though, I'm glad y'all are enjoying things you're learning, in particular, these Bible verses. And I used to think, listen, I had the old drug problem with my parents, was getting drugs to church. But I learned a lot in the church that I went to about the Bible and learned a lot about the verses and did a lot about the study. And I threw my life, even sometimes when I didn't act so good, but I always still have that, and I always come back to, and it gave you so much comfort. So, congratulations on this, and learn what you can about it, and the things that you learn at Councilwoman Benjamin at the youth conference, that's some great stuff that you can apply to life. And, and keep working hard and doing good in school. We're all so proud of y'all. Excited to be here.
And y'all don't have to say. You do not have to say.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Yelena. Next, we have Mr. Davis Mills from I.T. and the Box. If you would, please come forward, sir.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to share. And thank you, Ms. Jackson. My name's Dave Mills, and I lead the ALM's Endorsed I.T. and a Box Program. And Ms. Jackson has participated in two different cybersecurity training sessions this year, and that's where she got to meet me, both at conference and then at the CMO training recently. Oh, great. And Ms. Thomas, too. She asked me to come present tonight on the I.T. and a Box program. If it's okay, I'd like to give interview, one brochure. ALM is the Alabama League of Municipalities, and this, this program is comprehensive when it comes to technology. And it's, it's tailored for cities, and it's for cities. But what I'd like to really do tonight is instead of doing a presentation about what this program is, I would really like for you to ask any and all questions that you've got about technology, cybersecurity risks, concerns, the threats. I'd really like to just open the floor for you to ask me whatever you want to know, and then I can share with you how the program would address it or how you could address it yourself.
I'm not an I.T. person, so I'm going to ask it the way that I see it in my brain and how you know you get it. And it's, it's about security. We have a million-dollar-plus system here, and we were told just recently it was hacked. And my brain just won't wrap around that it was hacked. I think our server is here. I've been told that our server is right here, staff. So, what is the probability? And how do you take care of a risk like that? Also, I would like to know, can you pinpoint the hacker or when it was hacked? Do you have that kind of skill and expertise?
So there's a lot of questions that you need to answer. Let's, let's, let's work our way through.
Okay.
There, there's a few things that I want to share. Do not think that you're unique. Do not think that you're specifically a target. Um, these hackers are very good. Um, most cities, most cities, and, and we serve cities anywhere from 125 in population to more than 55,000 in population. Most every city's about 15 years behind in technology, running a 20-year-old accounting system. That, that means you're at great risk. And the reason why I say you're at great risk is technology changes fast. It used to radically change about every three years. Today, it's moving faster than every year. And when it comes to technology, you can't go ahead, you can't say we'll upgrade it later. You've got to keep it up to date because when you don't, that leaves holes for bad guys to take advantage of. Now that's what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with bad guys. What I want to share with you is that when you look at these hacks, um, ransomware. Ransomware is where somebody holds your data and your computer hostage and then they want you to pay untraceable funds to get back. I want to tell you, one in four, one in four who pay the ransom get their data. Of the one in four who pay the ransom and get their data, guess what? Hack, get hacked again. Why? Because they're a paying customer to a bad guy. These bad guys are untrustworthy. Why would you ever consider paying a ransom to a guy that's holding you hostage? Who says, "I'm going to put your data back just as it was. I'm going to clean up the mess on your network and I'm going to lock the door and never come back." It doesn't make sense. They're criminals. That's what we're dealing with here. Criminals. They're well-funded. They're not geeky Russian kids with pimples and hoodies. These are well-funded organizations, nation-states. They're making a lot of money. And the thing is, the reason why cities are even thinking about paying the ransom is because they're desperate. They're not proactively protected. They're not protecting on the front end. And here's, here's the thing. I do not believe, in every incident that I've seen, I do not believe it's been malicious in terms. I really believe, when I look at city staff, cities, this is where we are as America. We're trusting. We're way too trusting. And number two, we're busy. Every city clerk I know wears about five different hats. They're doing, they're, they're doing about five different jobs. And what that means is that when you take trusting and busy and put it together, we're low-hanging fruit for the bad guys and they're taking advantage of it. What you need to know is your three greatest risks. When it comes to technology, just like you shared when you first asked that question, you're not a technology person. What they're doing is it's not about bits and bobs. Your three greatest risks when it comes to technology, your three greatest risks are number one, poor passwords. I bet you half this room, half this room, half have a password that's easily compromisable. Half. Think about your staff. Half your staff have a password that's easily compromisable. I got one more better. One more better. Isn't that awful? One more better. My English. One in three have their password written down in their work area. This is, this is a people problem. What you need to know is your three greatest risks when it comes to your technology and your systems is number one, poor passwords. That can be addressed with policy. That can be addressed with technology and training. But you got to be proactive with it. Number two, patching. Now let me tell you what patching is. Patching is simply keeping your computers and hardware up to date. If you don't do regular maintenance on your truck, what's going to happen? It's going to break down at a time that's very convenient for you, right? No. I mean, patching, patching is keeping your computers up to date. Many cities are not doing patching. Do you know why? Because they're running 15-year-old systems and they're afraid if I install a patch, it'll break. They're kind of caught in this trap between a 10-year-old system, I need to install a patch, but I can't install the patch because it's going to break. And if I don't install the patch, I'm going to get hacked. It's a trap. So number one, passwords is your great risk. And think about your staff. If you have people breathing and working for you, you're at risk. Number two, passwords. Number three is patching. I didn't say bits and bobs.
What was number?
No, um, number one is poor password. Number two is staff. And number three is, is the technology, patching. And here's the thing, if you want to address cybersecurity risk, it's got to be done threefold. The first layer, you're policymakers. It starts with policy. If you don't have a password policy, you need one. If you don't have a computer use policy, you need one. An internet use policy, you need one. It starts right here. It starts with policy. Once you've defined policy, now we can implement the technology to enforce that policy. For example, not having policy means that your staff can have the password of 123456. That's number one worst password. You know what the number word, you know what the number two worst password is? Password. If anybody has a password here, please change it. You've probably already hacked. But we start with policy. Number two, number two, we implement the technology to enforce that policy. And number three, number three, please don't be offended. You need professionals implementing that technology. I'll give you an example.
Say no, don't say that again.
You need profi, for example, if you need brain surgery, do you want to use my cousin Bob? Or do you want to go to a brain surgeon?
Okay.
We use Bob here.
If it's my cousin, you're in trouble.
Well, our Bob's a little bit troubled.
I just want to ask you, um, do you think it's strange for our system here to be hacked and no ransomware came behind it?
This is, this is what I need to know. A virus can be resident for months. What that means is once the virus is hit, it's there trying to figure out what's, what can it do to get its biggest return? It can be resident for months before you're aware of the incident. And what you think they're going after may not be what they're going after. These, these, hey, listen, these are criminals and they're really good and they're really well-funded.
Okay, my last question.
Yes, sir.
Because I love to ask questions. Do you think it's strange for our backup being stored in the same place where our system is? Is that, is that, you're not asking for trouble with your backup in the same location?
That's not, that's not a strategy. Right. So, but, but here, but please, I've seen this with too many cities. So whereas, and, and what happened, for example, but the, the, the things that you need to be protected against with data backup, I dated the first three. The middle layer is you have to train your staff and you have to train them again. And you have to train them again. They need training. I like to see, we, we, for example, we offer regular ongoing training. So cities can just come into it and get the latest and up, latest. At a minimum, I like to see city staff come through twice a year. They're going to get the, the updates and, but number, number two, you got to train your staff. Number three, you do not, do not, do not, do not have a cybersecurity strategy unless you have data backup and disaster recovery. And you do not have a data backup and disaster recovery strategy if you don't test it. That's the problem. If you don't test it, you don't know that you could recover the data. If your fireman never drilled and your house was on fire, how confident would you believe? Will it be standing like it won't? Right? You have to test that data backup. Your data, other than somebody's life in jeopardy, when it comes to technology, I think the data is critical one. And you got to know that you can recover. Here, having a data backup in this building and then this building over here? That, that's not a data backup strategy. Having somebody sneaker with USBs or drives? It, it, listen, if you let people be involved, there's going to be errors because, I'll give you an example. Do you know how a virus gets on your computer? The person sitting right there in front of it installed it. It didn't magically appear. It didn't jump on there. The person sitting in front of it was deceived. That's what you got to see. These bad guys are, they're deceiving us. They want you to part with your money. That's something. And they're making a lot doing it. I'm not recommending career changes for anybody, but they're making a lot and it's bad.
Yes.
So long-winded answer to your question, but I tried to hit a number of different points.
You stopped at number two. You were at cyber risk, my brain is left-handed, I'm sorry. When he interrupted, I was still stuck where he was. Um, cyber risk control, number one was policy. Number two was enforcement. Number three, data backup.
So think of this, think of this first layer. This is just starting. The first layer, the first layer is going to be defining policy. Number two is going to be implementing the technology for that policy. And number three, you need professionals doing it. And I want to tell you why. It is not uncommon from the parking lot, I can pull at the city hall and be on their network. Do you know why? Because someone who's not trained has set up a wireless access point and they will use the same default password that was in the box, in the box. Or they will use a, a, a simple password that they should Superman. That's a multiple password for an administrator. Right? If that's yours. But that's that first layer. You need professionals. The second layer, that middle layer, once you've got that in place, you need to regularly train your staff. I can't stress that enough. You, and here's the thing, you've got to lead by example with that. It, it comes top-down. Councilmember Jackson has been through two sessions this year and she's asking questions in this.
Special note, Bill?
There you go. Number three, number three, your data backup and disaster recovery is your get-out-of-jail-free card. Because here's what you need to know. The only way you will never be at risk when it comes to, to, to cyber attack is if you turn off your computer and remove the network card. Then you're not at risk. You're not at risk, but you're not using technology. Follow me? If you connect to the internet, I'm telling you right now, you're at risk. And here's what you've got to do. You've got to be responsible. Put the policies in place. Get the technology configured correctly and managed ongoing. Have professionals do it. Have the data backup in place. Have your staff regularly trained. They're going to move on to someone else that's low-hanging fruit instead of you with that one. Yes, ma'am?
I would follow on Councilwoman Benjamin's question. Can you, we've been hacked. We discussed that when I called you. Um, can you come in and tell us where it came from and how to clean it up? I hear today we're almost working, about a week later. Um, we're about to start working, but we've lost something, so we got to recreate. Can you help us?
Yes.
Or determine where it came from?
And here's, here's what you need to know. It is not uncommon in cities, this is how we get the call. Cities typically aren't proactive. That's, that, that, they're just, they're, they're putting out all these other hot fires and now this becomes the hot fire at that time. It's painful. Um, when we come in, there are times when we can recover their data. The reason why is these hackers, they don't have to be programmers to know how to write code. They're purchasing it off the dark web. That's what you got, that's what you get. It's, they don't have to be technical doing it, right? But in the meantime, they can't recover you. But, but there are times when we can recover you. And then sad to say, sometimes we can't recover them. The patient can't, can't be brought back. The main thing that I want to stress is it's foolish to repeat. Right? It's foolish to not learn. It's foolish to say, I'm going to, I'm just going to, I got past this, I made it this time. Please, 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 um, take action. No matter who you leverage. This program's from the league. There are many different states on this program. This program is for cities, but the thing that I want to offer, and, and here's the other thing, don't just take somebody's word for it. You, if, if somebody's doing your data backup, show me. Show me I could recover today. I want to see. That's how you're going to build confidence in it, right? You need to see this. The thing that I want to offer is, is get those things in place. Policies. Start there. Technology. If you're running 10 to 15-year-old systems, you're at risk. You've got to get them up there. You got to budget for them. You got to plan for it. If you can get this data recovered, you really need to assess this because if it was an attack, that data could be anywhere now. You've got to copy, but it can be, I'll give you an example. Four months ago, there was a honeypot on the dark web. More than four billion usernames and passwords because of other breaches that have occurred. That also means potentially this day. You following me? There's great risk. I mean, it, it, learn from this, but then move forward. And here's the thing, by not moving forward, it can be three times the cost as if you'd have done it proactively all along. And that's what the data continues to show. Yes, ma'am?
Why, why did they leave, um, this is something that they, um, sponsored and announced. This is their project for this year. Why did they decide that this was an important topic that they wanted to take on and they wanted to ensure that the cities, assuming their training was aware of? Can you explain that?
I can. So this, um, this program started, well, first of all, the Alabama League of Municipalities has a sister organization in every state that serves the, the towns and cities in those states all the while. Um, this program started in Georgia to serve the cities in Georgia because what Georgia found was better than 75% of the cities in Georgia were not just at risk. They were at high risk when it came to technology. And they wanted to serve the cities. They wanted a program that was comprehensive to meet the needs of the cities and tailored for cities. And that's what this program is. Um, Alabama had been watching this program develop in the other states, Georgia, Kentucky, Arkansas, Iowa, as far as Connecticut, Oregon, um, now Alabama. We did a pilot here in Alabama for almost a year with the city of Vincent and the water at Vincent. And we just launched the program. But what you need to know with this program is it's tailored for cities. It's fixed cost. There's no long-term contract. I personally believe we should be serving you well and not at all. No contract. There, there is a contract. This right here, that's the statement of work. It's not nine pages of legal aid. It's, we're going to do, we're going to do the job tailored for cities. All of our staff are CJ certified, working for, we work with a number of public safety's as well. Um, this is what we do. It's my staff, 24/7. Um, this is what we do. And do not think you're unique. Do not think that it's just your city. Um, listen, you're leading this city. You're addressing the needs of this city. But this risk is at every city across all the states that we serve. And it doesn't matter whether it's a small city or large city. They're all fighting the same problems. Um, this program can help. Even if you don't investigate this program, the thing that I would offer is, don't be foolish. Don't repeat it. Take action. Take action. Yes, ma'am?
So most cities, um, if they have IT in a box, would they still have their own site, IT individuals that you work with? How, how does that work?
So most cities aren't blessed to have IT. And then those cities that, those, those that do have IT need twice the number of staff that got it. And I mean that, I mean that, I mean that realistically. Those that do, they need twice the staff that they've got. And we come alongside them both. IT in a box can drop in, um, just with a, just as the city is today. Or we can come right alongside the IT staff that are, that are there because like I said, most need twice that they've got. Um, and, and this is, in, in this instance here, there's, there's a few things that, that, that I, I would stress. Number one, enter in in a triage mode. Let's address the problem. Let's get the city operating, right? Number two, then let's start security and making certain we can always recover. Um, and then rolling out the additional pieces of it. But it would be addressing the priorities for you. But good, good, good question.
So now I want to piggyback on, uh, what Councilwoman Renoff asked you and then bring it back around. So, um, if we have been hacked and we have been hacked for a while and it's just sitting there and, and, um, no ransom is being asked for, we have just been hacked. Would, in your experience, why would a hacker hack just to be hacking? Not for, and number two, in your experience, uh, what is the ratio between finding hackers internally versus hacker, hackers externally?
Two good questions. So the, the first one, if you were compromised, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. If a hacker comes in to compromise you, the first thing they're going to do, if it's your mobile device, they're going to go to your notes. Are you storing usernames and passwords there? They're going to go to contact. They're going to go to contacts, are you storing usernames and passwords there? If anybody's doing that, please stop. Don't do that. But that's where they're going because so many people do it. They're, what they're doing is they're gaining enough information about you and then they're going to your email and looking at who you have influence over. If you're mayor or president, you've got influence. And it's not uncommon that an email would then come from you to maybe the finance director to set up a new vendor.
You're saying something.
Or set up a new password.
Or set up a new password.
She can email that password to that individual that works for the city.
Because what happens is, once you're compromised, they want to learn as much information about you so that they can have their finest attack. And if I can compromise you and then influence her and then compromise her, it's huge what goes on there.
So before you go farther, if I wanted to do this, just malicious, I just wanted to be malicious and perhaps just corrupt some things later, I could do this, I can hack this, I can go into all of these council stuff and I can pull their personal information, then I can go in their email and then I could send an email from them presumably to other people. I can do all that? If I had access to what I need to have access to?
And here's the thing, if I compromise your mobile device and you do banking on your mobile device, guess what just happened? I'm doing banking on your mobile device.
And you got all my other stuff too?
And, and now I'm using you to reach everyone that you have influence to. In cyber attack world, the example I just gave is what's called whaling. So everyone's heard of fishing. Fishing is the metaphor to where I do this, wide net, and I'm just trying to get anybody to bite. Whaling is when I go after the big fish. Because if I can get the big fish, I now have influence and push on anybody else. That's what whaling is. That's a targeted fishing attack.
So I could target these people? If I assume that in my mind, these people right here are the big fish, I could target them?
I mean, and like I said, there's deception, it's subtle. Sometimes they won't even compromise the account. What they will do is they will see an email that comes from that person and they'll mimic it and then they'll take that person's email and change it by one letter. Instead of it being an L, it'll be a 1. Instead of it being L, it'll be a K. And here's the way our minds work. They know how our minds work. I could type up a paragraph, I could misspell every word in the paragraph, but if I put the first letter and the last letter of every word is correct, you'd be able to read it. That's the way our minds work. And the thing is, they're taking advantage of us being busy and trusting. And when I see it come from C. Bolin, where the I has changed from a 1 to, from an I to a 1, I didn't read it close enough, I just said, hey, that's Carl.
That's right.
I'm trusting. Yes, sir?
Well, you're just as savvy as you are. Let's say the city of Selma engages with the business with you. From the text, let's say three or four months down the line, they have paid you whatever your cost is. And because they are just as smart and rather smarter, they will compromise our system and they will get around what we're trying to do. Are you being fresh to say that they are honest and they paid you?
So, good question. So a few things, specifically about this program. This program is league endorsed, multiple league endorsing, it's federally, state, and local compliant. All we do is focus on cities. And in addition to that, we also carry our own cybersecurity and Arizona Michigan insurance policies. You should be carrying cybersecurity and Arizona, cybersecurity insurance too. But we carry that as a part of this as well. We stand by what we do.
Well, I understand that. For the first three months, we're protected. Just like you are protecting us there, they're trying to find ways to get around you. And as I say before, they're just as savvy as you are. And they will compromise our system once again. They've paid you all this money for four months and we got nothing out of it because they have compromised our system. What returns can we get?
So here's what you've got to know. If you have people breathing that are working for you, you're at risk. And it doesn't matter who, I'll give you an example. Today, I'm in your town, you could have the best police force, they could be equipped with the latest technology, they could be getting the latest training, but you can't 100% guarantee me I'm safe. You can't.
But that's how we do it.
No, sir. Because, listen, you cannot 100% guarantee my safety in this city. You can't. And what I'm trying to say with technology is it's magnitude more than mass. For example, when it comes to cybersecurity, your compromise could be from a fellow employee, it could be from a citizen in the community, it could be from someone in the county, someone in the state, someone in the country, someone in the world. Now, me physically here, it's only going to be someone physically here that puts me at risk. But the reason why I'm making that point is you can't 100% guarantee my safety here.
I understand.
And I'm saying that with technology. There's no 100% guarantee. There's not, there's not.
I understand your position and I mean this probably stage. You've been trying to save your business, I'm being trying to protect the citizens at our dog mouth. And if we lose this money and engage you and perform much amount of lying, we'll compromise.
That's my position.
I understand you. I understand everything you just said. No, I'm speaking about me. I understand you. So we learned last night that our security system crashed actually in April or May, right? Well, I learned, maybe other people already knew. It crashed in April or May, right? And so now we have this whole entire, that was one department, a very large department. And then we have this entire system that crashed this time. Is there a correlation, would there be a correlation between a single department crashing in the month of April or May and an entire system going totally out in the month of September?
There could be, but it would take, it would take investigation to get, I'm a Y guy. In other words, when something comes up, I always want to drive to the Y. Because if you can't drive to the Y, you don't know. And in this instance here, it would be investigating to drive to the Y, to get that answer for you.
And you have a skill to investigate, right?
I used to, a long time ago, it's my staff.
Your staff has the skill to do the investigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I got a question for you. Just like, we have an IT department here and we're supposed to have the best computer wires we just got. Okay, it's just been hacked. And just like you were saying, you're here to explain to us about how you can, what the proceeds is, what we should have in place. Okay, we have an IT department where we as council leaders right now, the only thing we got is what you're telling us, the IT department has not come before the council yet to let this body know what has happened in there for the reason why this has been hacked. We haven't heard anything. All we hear is what the mayor say about the body, about it being hacked. But we have two people running the IT department which runs this whole city, like you said about all of the information, deal with the day-to-day operations, payroll check, your bank check, all of this is in place. So we have people that the city is paying to, in this position, that shouldn't someone like from, just like Ms. Jackson, call in for help? For someone to come into our city and give us some information on, about this being hacked? And we have someone that has not came before this body and explained to us, all they're doing is saying, you got the computers down, you got where you can't pay bills, you can't pay anything, where you're saying you're working on an IT department saying that you're trying to work on trying to get the situation up so you can print a check or a check and go out. So my thing is this, I think you've given us some good points, you've given us what we need to know as the elected officials that are supposed to run for the city of Selma, which we haven't got any information on where the breakdown went, what is going on, and how long are we going to have to wait for this system of the computer to come up? And I think we need some answers too. And I appreciate you giving us, you've given us some of the input that we really need to know to hear coming from the IT room, which we don't have enough, that we haven't heard anything.
Whenever there's a mention of that, I think you have to respond quickly, communicate well, and be visible, right? Because here's the way people's minds work. If you're not communicating well, their minds go to dark places. They assume the worst. That's human nature. But if you can communicate well and share, that tends to let people know you've got it. Now, the risk is, you've got to make certain to communicate accurately. You don't want to communicate or misinform. So number one, it... The elected officials have to work with staff to get those answers. But it's got to be working together to do it. And that's going to be following back, what is your current process to work with staff to get that information? That's really your core though.
And this is why, this is why this council, one of our council personnel requested for you to come in to, so the council could ask questions and to see what best that we could see. Because the whole entire city wants to know who hacked the system. The whole city of Selma wants to know who hacked the system. What happened? How did this happen to a population, this city with the, with the population of possibly 17,000, not even 18,000 siblings that live here in this city? So it never been hacked before and I've been here all my life and this is my first time ever knowing about our city government being hacked. So it is, as a leader, we are doing what we're supposed to do to find, to find out who hacked the system. And the city waiting to know, they want to know what happened, where did this hack come from?
So one, a couple more questions that I would add is, when was the backup last tested? Why are we not backed up? Right? If a good, your backup, your backup and disaster recovery strategy is what I think of as your get out of jail free card. When the bad things happen, think about if your best employee just messed up and made a mistake and clicked the link, maybe the finance officer that takes down the finance server. People make mistakes. You've got to know that you know that you know you can recover. And the way that you're going to know that is, you test your backups regularly. Number two, park that for a second because you're still down, right? If you're still down, why are you still, why are you still down? What is it, a week now?
Yes.
Longer, why are you still down?
This one's...
Since you checked the backup, how can you...
So, for example, our policy is two, we actually test the backups on a quarterly basis? Well, I mean backup, we monitor them real time. Think about somebody in a hospital, how do they get the things on? We're monitoring the data backup real time. I mean, we've got systems in place to monitor that real time. So we monitor it real time, we test it on a quarterly basis, and we do annual disaster recovery cases. So we know that we can recover. We know that we can recover. And this is the reason why. Don't think it's the big red easy button. We got cybersecurity handled. We just installed the big red easy button and we got it. What you've got to know is it's a layered approach. You've got to define the policies. You've got to implement the right technology. You've got to keep the technology up to date. You've got to have professionals doing it. You've got to have regular ongoing training available for your staff. They need to know about the latest risks. Because here's what's happening. The bad guys are making a lot of money changing and deceiving what they're doing. It's all, it's evolving and ongoing. I mean, how many have gotten a phone call from the IRS? It's not the IRS, right? And then the last thing is, like I said, I've already given layers to do. You've got to check off every one of these as a minimum. And then the last one is that data backup. Because here's what's going to happen. Just as you can't 100% guarantee me that there's not a criminal in the city that could jeopardize anyone here. I'm saying the same thing with technology. You've got to have your data backup in place so that when something bad happens, two things. You know that you can recover, number one. And this is the one most people neglect. Listen to me, this is the one most people neglect. You've got to know how quickly you can recover.
Right.
And the reason why I say, it's not just good enough to say we can recover. If we got to run payroll on Thursday, we got to have it running before Thursday. I mean, if you think about not being able to get out your utility bill, if you can't get the money coming in to pay the checks going out, this is great risk. If, you've got to know time to recover. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
I've got a couple of things for you. First of all, I hear that you said there are no guarantees in life. My dog was alive yesterday morning when I left home and dead 54 minutes later. So no guarantees. What I heard from our council, my fellow council member, is that it appears that a department was down from April or May. Our IT department didn't address it, it's been down since April or May. We have a great IT department, but no one has said, we want all our money back to pay you since April or May because you didn't do the job you were here to do. Because they were working, they just didn't address this issue. Okay? And so it appears that is when you initially stated, that sometimes life's dormant, then moves and see, so it eventually moved to the entire city system or the financial system. I want to know, as an employee with the financial system being compromised, am I in a position that I might be compromised? That my information, my social security number, my date of birth, maybe on the black web, and since there has been no communication regarding employees, former employees and current employees, of information that could have been compromised, what do I need to do to make sure that I'm protected? First thing I did last week was call LifeLock. But what can we do and what can our mayor do to communicate in IT department this information to our, not, and maybe it's just the financial department, maybe it protects the license, so it could be our citizens, our business owners. I mean, we just don't know how great we're compromising.
So two things, you made a point that this has been going on for so long and what about the cost related to that? One thing about IT in a box is it's fixed cost. So if we resolve it in one hour, one day, it doesn't change. It's fixed costs, done. The second point you made is, are we at risk? If your system is compromised, all the data that's stored in those systems is at risk. And if that is personal, and if that is personal identifiable information, that personal identifiable information can show up on the dark web, it can show up for others to take advantage of. Leveraging a service, a service similar to LifeLock and to others to protect your accounts, your personal identity, they cost you, right? That personally costed you. Many times with cybersecurity insurance, they will cover the cost of that for those that are potentially affected. So one thing I would definitely recommend is if the city doesn't have cybersecurity insurance, the city should be looking at cybersecurity insurance.
So can I ask you a big question? Because I know we're kind of, people are walking out. You stated that we should know when our last backup was. We should also know when the last time our employees were trained. Is that not correct? And if we haven't had any training, because should not the council have been trained as well? Since we're members and we utilize...
Somebody needs to say that. Councilwoman, hold on one second. Let me, before you leave, I need five people at this podium. Can somebody get Councilwoman Randolph or Boleen or some, somebody get them back to the podium because she has to leave and go on the road. I need five people at the panel. You went to one of their contact, thank you.
And, and, this is why the league has the program. The league has this program because our cities have need. And again, this program is tailored for cities, priced for cities, no long-term contract, it's fixed cost. If we have the opportunity to serve and help, that's what we do. If we have the opportunity to serve and help, that's what we did.
You would have come with a quote tonight from the city itself, but my request to the IT department for information regarding what you asked me, the number of servers we have, backup servers, number of PCs, all that information went to no avail. And so, you're, you're not able to come. You did bring us a chart at the other two trainings at the league showing us just how it's tailored around the city. So, it may be as low as seventy-five percent a month and higher than that. But we're receiving cyber security, computer maintenance, the data backup and disaster recovery, records and document management, and great, one thing that I was, of course, the policy and compliance. So, you're going to help develop the IT policies.
And remember, do bits and pieces of this. It, it would be tailored to what your needs are.
Right.
But we can do bits and pieces and you can change it, expand it, shrink it, amount the money.
And the memory management and procurement. So, as you stated at one of your, your trainings that we were looking for software and things of that sort, we may not pay thirty-five hundred dollars for a MacBook because we may, can find a MacBook for cheaper.
Right.
But, but it would all, all be, have gone through the procurement process.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any more questions for our special guest? Thank you so much. I don't know where you traveled from.
I travel all over the country.
You traveled here from Georgia today?
Mm-hmm.
You did? Oh, well, thank you so much.
I try, I drive and fly everywhere.
Okay. I don't blame you, you make a lot of money. So, but thank you for traveling. And you almost gave us a free workshop. I would say this is valuable information that you gave us on tonight alone. So, thank you for the free workshop. We do appreciate it. And I'm sure that Councilwoman Jackson will probably lead the charge on bringing this back on the agenda at our next reception. You'll probably hear from our president after that, after the council deliberates. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And if anybody needs to contact, remote contact info is on the, the bottom left, the desk.
Okay, got you.
And, and thank you for the opportunity to, to share with you.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman, I would ask you a fact. Have the two of you all helped me with this project to see if we can get some of that information?
Sure. At least we can get a quote, just to see where we stand. This may not be something long-term. This may be something that we utilize to determine where it actually started, what we need to do.
We need to know.
But I think this is something, if you could help me obtain that information because my please was not answered to get the information from IT. I had swayed to try to assist me in that area and it was just...
To no avail.
Right. You must go with the mayor.
Okay, well, I don't mind at all here. Thank you.
I thought you would.
I would not mind at all. Um, under the mayor's report? Thank you. Under the mayor's report, I think we have a mayor report, is that correct? Uh, Ms. Carter? Okay. So, we're gonna go on under the mayor's report, we have the mayor report program. We're gonna bring Ms. Carter up, coming with her. Uh, you come, what, Ms. Thompson?
If someone has anything for me, I mean, so...
Good afternoon. How did, very brief and take up very little of your time. I just wanted to do an overview of what we've done so far over the year. This is our annual report. We have forty-eight members, four full-time team leaders, twenty-eight halftime members, and sixteen quarter-time members, which were high school students. And those high school students came from Dallas County, Southside, Selma High, and Keith and ETS. That's where the students came from. Then we did our goals, which provided academic student services to eight hundred students of the Selma City Student System. And we served eight hundred seventy-one. Our target goal was six hundred and forty students showing improvement. We had seven forty-seven that showed academic improvement. Our goal also was to provide physical activities to students because of obesity and health issues. We served three hundred eight. And our goal was to have two hundred and forty of those, uh, three hundred to show some type of improvement. Our target number, we ended up two fifty-six. Out of the sixteen high schools that we had, they were supposed to get their high school diploma. We had fourteen because two of them were actually juniors, and they're now in the twelfth grade. But we had twenty-eight members to attend college, move on to college. We're supposed to recruit at least a hundred and fifty volunteers, we did one ninety. And then we've, we've done five community service projects. Because tomorrow is nine eleven, our last day of community service project, we'll be doing a presentation at Knox Elementary School to fourth-grade students on the events of nine eleven, how it came about, what happened, show a video, and then do an opening discussion that happened at school. And it will start tomorrow at 1:00 P.M. If any of you are available to attend, this will be at on tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Ms. Carter, let me start off by saying how valuable this program is to our city. And I personally know because the programs that I provide myself, Mayor Corrigan's involved in that. And before we go into questions from council members, I, you all have been very, very patient. First of all, thank you all, all of you all who helped me out. I really, really appreciate it. But you've been very patient tonight. Let's have Mayor Corrigan please stand in. We usually don't go this long until we get to the mayor's report, but some of you all know that too. But it was, uh, it was a necessary thing that we did tonight, so we had to go a little bit long. And thank you all very, very much. And Ms. Ms. Carter, that was the end of your report, right? So, I'm going to questions if, if so.
That's fine.
Okay. Councilman, I'll just show you.
Recently attended the Mayor Corrigan seminar, you're correct?
Yes.
And in that seminar, Dallas County, Selmas, Mayor Corrigan was recognized as a model program?
It was.
Okay. Could you give us a little bit more, any data clarification about that presentation?
Well, we've been pretty good at, at our retention group. And we usually, all one percent of the members, they do serve their entire time. And we've always been able to actually fill all of our, our spaces. We are one of the largest programs in the state, and we are the only program in the state that do pass through students.
I do realize the Mayor Corrigan program is based on a drawdown. And I do know, and I do understand there's been some, some, for lack of a better term, hiccups in getting our money going on a regular basis. And that kind of goes on?
All information has been submitted. The state is in the process, they're processing it, and there's a process. And everything that we are supposed to do, to do, we about actually submitted it. It has been done.
My final question. Many some of the students, Mayor Corrigan, what is assigned to?
We are at all the elementary students in the city, so...
All of them?
All elementary students in the city, so we've done SOU, we've done Selma High, and we've actually done, uh, check, our question.
Okay, are we at full capacity for the staff, for our program? Or are there any vacancies?
There will be when the program, uh, begins, the program started October first, twenty eighteen. And this round ends September third, twenty nineteen. And all of the, with new commission, the new program will start October first, twenty nineteen.
And we're in the third year of the comeback period. I've been back in for three years.
Councilwoman Thompson?
No, she, oh, and then I got, I got some questions.
Okay, I just, Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead, Councilwoman Jackson.
That's fine. First of all, I'd like to say I'm an alumni of Mayor Corrigan. So, I am really appreciative of the program. I was at Payne School, and Mr. Kabers actually allowed me to have my own classes and practice to get me to go into the teaching field, but I was set on public safety. But I too have concerns about the finances. I'm glad to hear that it is now being rectified. I want to know how many reports were missing? What was the reason that they weren't submitted on time? And how much funding was involved?
Well, first of all, the reports were never missing.
How many reports were required to the city to have...
We have to submit reports every month. I, I get information from the finance department, and then I submit them electronically to the state about that. Now, as far as their process, you know, they have their own process. I submit mine about ten days a month, once I get the report from the finance office. I cannot submit anything without a report from the finance office. The reports are sent electronically, and then I have to physically mail them in to the state about that.
I understand that. My second question was how, are we paying?
We're supposed to pay by, you know, by the month.
We're supposed to be reimbursed monthly?
We're supposed to be reimbursed monthly is what I was told. But that has not been in the process for any program in the state this year. Now, while there's a hiccup this particular year, I cannot answer that question. I don't know, it's beyond my control. All I can tell you is that I submit things, and it's a matter of where they're supposed to be, but I cannot control what the state has.
Okay. My final question was how much money is that is involved in it? The total amount this year?
I don't have a total amount in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Okay. So, were we paid at any point this year? The monthly reports were submitted, submitted every...
The monthly reports were submitted.
Reimbursed at all for the entire year?
They have not done any, they have not reimbursed any reimbursements. But it wasn't just for this program. It's something that has gone on beyond, like I said, it's beyond my control. I cannot control it. All I can do is submit the things like I'm supposed to, and by the time deadline that I'm required to do so. Now, if there are any errors, it just depends on when they look at it. And then once they look at it, they notify me, and then I will make the corrections and send them back in by deadline, if you need.
So, we have not been reimbursed at all this year? I'm not sure of the total amount.
I'm not sure of total amount.
Let me ask.
The only reason is because I don't have a report from, so I don't have, you want to come, you know, to the office, and then I can pull what you need and give you what you need.
Yes ma'am.
But it will, I mean, but it will become. It just has not, I got to get it. Now, usually that's not the process, it's never taken this long forward. But there's been different kind of turnover and changes. So, we started the systems, I'm just waiting to see what the process is.
Okay. I mean, you've always been very gracious with answering my questions when I, when I called and allowing your, the Mayor Corrigan team to come out and help, you know, and I'm appreciative of that. I am concerned, however, because I want to, you're the grant compliance officer, exactly. Are, are you the grant compliance officer?
Yes.
And so, you would have emails to the state asking about the reimbursement and requesting that it be submitted and making them aware that you have not received?
Well, I actually submit the, submit the, the things to the state, and then Mr. Thompson handles everything.
So, Mr. Thompson, you have those emails, after she submitted the monthly reports and your way to reimbursements and you did not receive them? Was there an email sent to the state saying what's, what's wrong, who never received that one to reimburse?
Yes, yes.
And so, you sent that over to a panel?
Uh, not only that, we've actually had to travel over to Montgomery as well to meet with them in regards to getting certain issues corrected as well as... They have come down here twice in regards to trying to get things corrected. Like Ms. Carter said, it's not just the Selma Mayor Corrigan thing. It's overall that there's certain circumstances that certain reimbursements have not been received. But we're working with them diligently, and they have also stated to us that none of our reimbursements are in jeopardy because of this.
They have stated that.
Yes.
Are you, are you down for that? Are you submitting your reports?
I'm sorry.
Are you submitting your reports over A.D.A.?
Yes.
Go ahead, she. Okay. You're coming up to the end of the Mayor Corrigan, how many more months you have? How many more months y'all got for you?
This is, we're coming to the end of this program.
You're coming to the end of this program this month?
This month.
This month?
Well, October is...
It's a September year, right?
September. You're just coming to the end of this program for this fiscal year, with the grants of security, our security for twenty years. Is this the third year, I guess, except for...
This is your third year? Or this is just the second year?
This is the second year.
So, you, your second year?
Of a three-year grant.
Of a three-year grant. So, you have one more year?
Yes.
In, in the period of time, uh, we first, when we first did, uh, for your, the date that you applied, the grant, for the grant to match the money that, that come from the city, from the general fund to match you, you guys were supposed to match. As of, at the, as of this point, that, uh, where it's saying that we haven't drawn anything in, are we guaranteed to, at the end of this year, of October, that we will get the matching money that you applied for the grant for that, for this fiscal year?
The way the grant works is that we submit the grant, we get the grant, it's drawn down monthly. I've submitted all the reports to the, to the state, who then submits them to the federal government. It is actually a passed through grant from Corporation National and Community Services. All the financial documents have been submitted.
Okay.
The state has to process them. I cannot tell you what they'll process.
So, it's...
So, I, I, usually it does not, it has never taken a year, but there have been some issues. So, all I can tell you is that I've submitted everything that's supposed to be submitted. Mr. Thompson has fought through with everything. Whatever corrections that needed to be made have been made. The money will be reimbursed, but I cannot give you a date because they have not given me a date.
But don't you have to apply for another grant after the beginning of this? You got to reapply for, for the next year?
The, the grant is a three-year grant. And it's a three, it's a three-year cycle.
If, if, if it's not true that Mr. Thompson just stated that we were not in jeopardy of losing this...
It is true, we are not in jeopardy.
We're supposed to receive these funds?
Yes.
We are absolutely.
Yes, we're absolutely one hundred percent happy.
Okay. And as soon as they give you all the date, you're gonna email the council and make us a wait?
Love to.
So, we're gonna call them again tomorrow?
Yes ma'am. I believe, I can call the council, the president, and he can relay everything to you.
Thank you so much.
Whatever, I don't know, we get, or what comes to our email, it comes to Mr. Thompson's email, and we can just work.
How much is the admin cost? What percentage?
The admin cost, off the top of my head, I, I think it's probably about sixteen, about sixteen thousand dollars would be the admin cost. The, the, the biggest part of the grant actually goes to for the members. That is the biggest, largest cost of the grant. And the way that I wrote it is that the cost for the members is absolutely one hundred percent reimbursed. So, what the city pays mostly is the salaries and for the salaries of the staff, and then for any, like, training materials or travel. But as far as the member cost, because that is favorable, it does not fluctuate, that is the largest cost that's in the grant, and it is written, so it's what a one hundred percent of the member cost is absolutely reimbursed.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Thompson?
Ms. Carter, it's not about, about the, uh, it's about the fund is because, the reason why I asked you that is because, you know, we have people that has been out of work. And we are, we are using a general fund money, you know, where we match according to you saying, uh, matching, we're matching what you're saying, we're supposed to get back from, from the, the grant. And which we look at, we see that it hasn't been, came in yet. And then now, if we're ready to start another fiscal year, where we still don't have the other, other employees back, and then we got to come back and continue your program for another year with, with the, with the funding from the general fund.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, you know, you understand what comes across.
I understand it.
It's a three-year cycle, it's a three-year...
And again, all I can do is submit what was acquired of it to them, but I cannot control what the process is.
But I just want to let you know, this is why I was asking, because, you know, the money comes out of the general fund to keep the program going. And if you're not getting any back in, and you keep going in, getting, keeping, keeping the program going, and we keep talking about, we, we looking at the way we can fund and bring the workers back. This, this is, that's my, that's my, me now. I don't know, I'm just looking at it like that.
Yes ma'am, that's understandable. But like I said, usually it's never, it's never been a, a process that's taken this long in the past.
Okay.
Now, usually we're reimbursed for the ninth day. Uh, for some reason this year, I don't know what's processed, so I can't, um, know which.
Well, that's all, that's my concern. I'm, I'm just speaking me as a, as a leader here. I'm, I'm looking at the other... I'm, I'm looking at the other side too concerned about the other employees that used to work into.
Councilman, your.
Let me go over there. America was a federal fund. And here in Selma, America was one of the most valued programs in the city. And that, it is, it is being managed by two other dedicated people that sit down. That's Mr. Henry Thompson and Mr. Reese Carr. Unfortunately, they're not, they're disadvantaged when it comes down to the actual money, coming down the pipe from the government, whatever it is. They are, they have control over that. But they have been assured that the money for America will be dispensed, but it's gonna be dispensed when the federal government releases the money. I would say that America Grant is not the expenditures that's being submitted, I mean, that's being paid out of America. It's not bringing about any hardship on this city. So, once again, I would direct it to be clear. America is needed. America is welcome. And I appreciate the participation in America and I appreciate the hard dedicated work of Mr. Henry Thompson and Mr. Reese Carr.
Any other questions for Ms. Carr?
No, I just want to say thank you all again for your service. Thank you for the report. This is, this is a lot. Y'all have been on the ball. Thank you very much.
I'd like to give you the short, short, if I could have made one thing, I don't know. I can, if that's what you want.
Thank you ma'am.
Yeah, I will, I will be calling y'all.
Councilman Reddick.
Yeah, Ms. Carr, I just want to thank you for outstanding job you're doing. I know sometimes it get kind of hectic, but you know, we know that laid off employees are not coming back. The mayor not gonna bring them back. We go in over and over and over and over again. So, this shouldn't have nothing to do with your program because they pay you from two different, two different parts, you know. If yours is federal and ours come from, from the city. So, I just want to thank all your employees for doing a good job, especially, what's your name right there? Man, man, Mr. Jones had a battle, a cooking contest out here. Rain been a little going down. But he, he held his ground, you know. He can cook now. And I appreciate everything all y'all do. And I look forward to maybe some of y'all assist me with the senior citizen program next Saturday. How about that?
Any other questions for Ms. Carr? Thank you.
I, I just got, nothing, nothing for you. You know, we was talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
We was talking about, uh, uh, city employees. We, we check with the league on, on about the, uh, the eight-hour vacation that this goes down. It's putting Jackson, reading the statement. Because it's important for him to understand where our league is coming from. Uh, the league is, they wishy-washy, you know. I'm just saying the truth. I, I don't, the league should, the league should take side with nobody. They should interpret it low and leave it alone. And whether it be right or wrong, don't, don't say, don't give me no color announcement. I don't want to do it because I might offend the mayor. I don't want to hear it.
There's thirty-one and a lead though.
Yeah, yeah.
Not everyone.
But anyway.
Ma'am, bring the memo, ma'am. Okay, well, I don't think that's exactly what was stated, but, um, so, Councilman Brenda tasked me with contacting the league. And this is what I asked. This is Maya Jackson with the City of Selma. Good morning to Nate, to Nate Fraser. And, but they ran it by, she called me and she ran it through Lori, who is the executive director, she was also cop. on me. This is Maya Jackson with the City of Selma. I request your assistance regarding the matter below. In a legally convened meeting, the Selma City Council moved by a majority to go to pay, to pay all employees affected by the November twenty-eighteen layout, up to eighty hours of their accumulated vacation time. This vote was taken several weeks ago and to date, the mayor has refused to allow the payments to be processed. I'm writing to determine, one, does the Selma City Council have the authority to pass above reference motion? Two, is it within the mayor's discretion to decide not to follow the majority vote of the council? Three, what is the remedy for the council if the mayor chooses to ignore the council's decision on this matter? Thank you for your assistance in this matter in regards, Maya. Maya, unfortunately, I would not be able to answer your question without the mayor and the council agreeing to the facts as stated. It is our policy that issues regarding the power of the mayor and council and disputes between the mayor and council must be submitted in writing agreed upon by the mayor and council.
Did I interpret it right? Or was that wrong?
No, no, he didn't interpret it right, but I get, I get what you were trying to say. That's not what the. You had me get fired up, but that's not what the email said, but I, I understand what you are saying. That you want an answer according to the law and that the league should give an answer according to the law. I didn't hear her say that she didn't want to make a mayor mad.
But that's basically what she said. She said, move your, move your agreement.
This is the email, but I am in one hundred percent agreement with Council Brenda. We need a legal, we pay into this thing, we need a legal, legal, legal response.
What since the, the league wants an agreed finance, and since our council for the, for the city would be in a difficult position, I would humbly and respectfully request that we ask Mr. Segal to look into this matter. I mean, that's our only remedy is to determine legally and we're not going to get it from the league. And we can't get it from Attorney Jones because he'd be in a difficult position. So, I'll turn to.
What difficult, I'm sorry.
Maybe we can ask him, but.
He don't need to be in a difficult position. If he's in a difficult position, we need to get somebody.
No, what I'm saying, when I say a difficult position, I'm saying if we, the mayor's going to say no. He's going to say you need to do it and there's nothing that's going to happen. Any legal motion to go to the courts, he cannot do because he cannot choose one party over the other, much like the league.
We need a legal answer from our attorney.
We know that we.
Just tell him, give us a legal answer. He ain't got to tell us about the feelings of the mayor. Tell him we need a legal answer and then let's go to body.
We, that we're authorized.
Our money.
That we're authorized to do, we know we're authorized.
What? No, no. Ask him to give us the law on it. What, what the law, which I thought the league was gonna give you and they did not.
So, for my email.
They're wishy-washy.
To Attorney Jones.
Ask him what the law says. Tell him to give you the written law. Okay, if we can have no resolve, then let's go to body because that costs us more money.
It does.
And we already have an attorney on staff.
Right.
Yeah, so ask him, let him.
Okay. I do that, we know the law is in our favor regarding this matter.
We know, we know.
We go there and then if any legal remedies has to occur, we're going to have to go outside.
So, we can show we've been through all this. Yeah, we know.
All the tasks with the loved ones. I bring you back.
Thank you so much.
Because if we go fair to our people, we just laid off, they have money and they're entitled to it, but the mayor holding their money. That's, that's not fair.
Ask him.
Yeah, he, he, he holding the employee account. He don't have, have their account. No, he don't. He don't have their account. They won't give him their money. I'm telling you, these people unemployment don't ran out. Unemployment don't cease to, don't cease. And, and, and they need that money.
Not to committee reports, uh, recreation, uh, uh, no report no more than I will be following, uh, the budget, uh, meeting, uh, signing the, uh, preparation. Just trying to get a good time, thank you to the mayor. I don't get any about no real similar.
Ms. President, Councilman Johnson, I was committed with you and I know that the mayor's probably available during the day, but please remember I'm in court and I need to be at that meeting under bar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to do the best, you know, I'm doing the best I can. I'll let you know.
All right.
Friday after twelve, that'll still be in the daytime. We did it for him, so maybe it'll.
I got the progress meeting, that's not just for mayor.
No.
Okay, amended committee, Councilwoman Stone, committee to the Bellman. All right. Councilman Reddick?
I, I don't have any report, but I just want to mention Senior Citizen Program next Saturday, uh, September twenty-first from twelve to, asking everybody to come, you know, all senior citizens. We don't have an age, but we say if you're senior citizen, you think you're senior citizen, just come on. All right.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, we with Councilwoman Thomas and I get with Councilwoman Youngblood, the city, we have our committee meeting Monday, Tuesday, next week with Chief Green and Chief Brown. A committee meeting. Uh, that's gonna be at the next council meeting. Okay, yes, we have, uh, three candidates that we need to look at on tomorrow. And at our next council meeting, we would represent, uh, five applicants, five chief applicants for the council. I would put everything in your box prior to next council meeting, based on percentage having raised and also about, uh, future at the top thirty applicants.
Okay. Yes ma'am.
Um, a citizen had called me, asked me why the flag is still, uh, had, had mass in the center hall. Can somebody?
Thank you.
Uh, tell me, because, because the flag should be had massed. That's a disrespect for our flag for it to be had massed if you're not declared, tragedy happened or something like that. So, can you call the mayor and tell him to ask the fire department who put the hat mask, if they, to put the flag all the way up?
Yeah, they, they do that every morning.
Yeah. But they, but they ain't morning, they put up a hat mask.
One of what?
I don't know.
I just wear it morning.
But, and I.
They change it every morning.
Yeah, and another thing, we need to try to work on getting a new flag too, because that flag don't say.
Time to retire.
It time to retire. So, if anybody regular listening on can find a way how we get a, a new flag.
Mayor Leach, they just being one recent, uh, for what's.
I can, I can check. What's, what's his name?
Benson.
Benson.
Yeah, it was Benson.
Now, the governor, tomorrow, the governor has issued an order for had.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, so they will be correct tomorrow. They need to cut it out.
Yeah, I understand. That's everything, that's everything.
Okay, uh.
I have a question for, um, Public Safety, um. Oh, so when you all are meeting, are you all going, when you all meet, are you all gonna set interview dates for Chief of Police next?
Yes.
At that, uh, meeting that you're gonna be.
No, no, tomorrow we're just going to fire, then soon as we, uh, finish with the fire, we'll immediately go into, uh, the police chief.
Because I know we have this tag, right?
Have you seen resumes?
We have.
Have about nine or ten of them.
Nine, ten.
Yeah, that's, we have about ten and, uh, I'm talking with Chief Green now, former lady of committee. And probably within the next week or so, we will start formulating the committee with the question and everything and move forward.
Would you say a committee for the chief?
No, no, I, I'll be a different committee. Back. Uh, Public Works General Service?
Uh, Mr. President, Public Works General Service has had their amended meeting arranged Friday, the sixth, I think it was the sixth and two o'clock. I wish Councilman Youngblood had the main sheet and minutes. But that meeting was designed to hear from the department heads what they're proposing for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Uh, and to, my committee to share with them some perspectives on what we, uh, support or don't support. I mean, right off the bat, uh, I don't support the, uh, Public Works being housed on twenty-four employees. At least needs to be fifty employees in Public Works General Services and I expressed that to the mayor. Also, Mr. Hendrix, uh, and, and, and I garnered a lot of information from the PEG challenge because the various departments are talking about budgets on PEG challenge. I would encourage my colleagues, those who have PEG challenge, to view it. And I made some notes relative to Public Works and General Services, but I've made notes on all of them. So, when the, when the whole council community gather, then we can intelligently talk about some of the things that we support, some of the things that we don't. In, 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 in that, uh, presentation on the PEG challenge, Mr. Hendrix talked about the various equipments that his department needs, which will come under capital equipment, not Public Works General Services. But he talked about the city needing a dump truck, the city needing a side cutter and a sucker truck. All these things that need to be here in the city, although the city is bored of a side cutter, but then you have a sucker truck which is not working. And I don't know if dump trucks are working or not, but those are three major capital equipment that his department need to retain, uh, revenue quality services here in Selma. And of course, his budget is, uh, only twenty million dollars, which means that it will entail some revenue generation through taxes. And how this is gonna fare with this council, I don't know. I'll just share with you all what the budget entails for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Once the four councils come together and deliberate and talk about budget ending up the cell, I think that's where some cuts will take place. Some, um, compromises need to take place as well. Hopefully, if it was the whole council convening, hopefully the mayor would be part of that process. That's the only way I can see it, come up with a realistic budget. Where both parties is in agreement on their distribution. Nevertheless, Mr. President, that was the essence of the Public Works General Services Committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas?
From Public Building, I received a call from Mr. Jerry Peace this morning. Uh, I would do with my committee to, um, when we have the meeting tomorrow, I would like to, uh, have, uh, I'm gonna call Mrs. McElroy Williams. She's the one that's been handling the Dallas Academy claim. And, uh, she would like to talk to me about the, the questions I was asking about finishing up the Dallas Academy. So, we're gonna have her put on speaker at the meeting tomorrow. So, with my committee, she said, Michael, you coming to the?
I'm just my nearby, so I'm people, just my nearby.
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock. Uh, we are trying to, uh, get the Dallas Academy building finished up, uh, with the work. And President, well, did you find out why the, the air condition, uh, the guys not having started yet? You didn't find out yet? Okay. Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Clark, Ms. Ivy, have, didn't, did they come inside the paper?
The contract?
Uh huh.
Yes ma'am.
So, why they haven't started?
I don't know. You need to follow back up with Ms. Terry.
Which?
You need to follow back up with Ms. Terry because when, um, when he signed the contract, he said he could be following back up with Ms. Terry for one purchase order. And that was the end of our discussion about that.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully, Ms. Terry be here tomorrow, does this stuff up anywhere?
She's still on the way. So, I'm saying, oh, well, don't, we, we, if we have a meeting, it doesn't make, we have a meeting. Talking about our department heads dealing with the budget, you're saying that we need to get with them to hear their side, uh, with the budget. And you, you're saying if she's coming, if she's not.
It might be America tomorrow. She might walk through the door.
No, I don't, I don't base on business like that. I'm just saying.
I, I, I think the term works to get well.
No, no, but, but I'm just saying, you, you, we're calling a public building meeting with a department head that you require that we meet with all department heads to discuss our budget. And if she, if she's ill, it's not good, we doing, uh, uh, we can't discuss anything if she's not present.
Because she got a sister, Linda.
It was, um.
Ms. Bell. Ms. Bell, you're right.
Yeah, we can just have her there for this, Ms. Bell, come on, come on down there.
Okay.
So, I just want, I'm just not here about a meeting. I got to check my schedule, see what's going on. If by any chance this meeting, the council, council, department head, can you please give my note of life and a band?
Okay.
That way I can tell.
Well, we do, we, I don't know why you don't get, uh, I don't understand why you don't get no, no, no checks on the meeting, no message on the meeting.
Who sent them?
That's them.
Me sent them.
I didn't get it.
That's what I'm trying to understand, why you don't. That's what I'm trying to understand. Why you don't?
It could be your email address. He has a number behind his second email address.
Oh, M five.
The number five.
M five.
And then there's a one without it.
Right.
Cause we email, we email them every time.
One aspect of my report I committed and should include, what came out of that description was, uh, salaries.
Oh, 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 go ahead, little fool.
I wouldn't even.
Okay, I thought you wanted to, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, and then also I want to, uh, and you may, I, I wanted to, uh, in our committee meeting that, uh, Clay Carmichael is coming before our committee meeting about, uh, and he have this event that he does every year.
He's applying for a grant.
Yeah, he, well, he's, he's come before, it's because the grant due on the twentieth. And we just noted about it last night. So he's come before the council, cause he needs to vote on it. And he's come before the, uh, we have a committee meeting tomorrow. So he's come before us to tell us all about it. Cause the deadline for the grant is the twentieth. He have to be unfinished it up, so.
Twenty, that's next month.
Yeah.
Why he come last night?
He came last night, but he ain't getting no, this was work session. He, he told, he said he called Cory, told Cory and Cory told him come before the work session. But he never, he knew all this time, he could have came before the committee, had a meeting before then and talked to the committee and we could have wrapped this up. But he, he did not do it until last night.
Just, just catch him on me.
He just did it last night.
Okay, anything else?
No, I just want to, uh, let him know that, uh, two o'clock, he's coming. Um, he thought we was going to vote on it tonight, but he's got to come before the committee and explain to us, you know.
Yeah, that's why I really gave it to you last night.
That when he thought he was going to get it done and we going to come and do it today. We couldn't do that. He got to come before the committee and tell us what, uh, you know, the, the grant he's, he's going to apply for. He says the deadline on the twentieth. So he needs to meet tomorrow with us and tell us everything.
All right.
Now, I'm.
I was about to say, you know, something that I'm meeting in my report, which is very important. Uh, that is the liberal wages that the mayor has gathered his budget across the board on his departments. And of course, he's basing that different liberal, uh, liberal wage on the August study for which the city paid eighty thousand dollars for. One thing that study did not comply was the resources to implement. So what the mayor is proposing that there be increases thinking the gasoline tax and business tax increases across the board that will provide the necessary funding for the operation of the city. So, uh, I just need the council to be aware of that. He is including in his, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, increase in salaries based on the August study.
That study was a, a wrong one, right?
It was something that they, it was something that they, uh, felt was need, uh, in the city.
I have, I have.
Compared to the speaking across the state, across the nation. But as I said before, one thing I said, Mr. Reverend.
I have a question for Councilman Monsieur. Councilman Monsieur, in your meeting, um, two things. Did, were you provided a copy of study? Cause I think you've been asking for it and I've been asking for it. And then two, um, was the question asked or wasn't just generally discussed in this plan? How, uh, someone with little to no experience, uh, could be, um, a wage, their wage, be brought up to someone with, um, someone who is highly qualified and has experience. What's that, uh, discuss, that you get a copy?
Well, the first question, the only thing you have to, then you're talking plan. And there will be discussion about the classification of all the person, uh, compared to the salaries that they're going to be given. Perhaps, um, kind of, they could be, uh, maybe, yeah, who wants to, as someone attached house members gather. Uh, once again, I think these three meetings and skillful, uh, department heads and their presentation to the mayor as to what they would need to operate their department in the, uh, incoming year. I do wish this, uh, this will know that we need these equipment, like, how we all are farming this, it's a city that I don't know the question. I do know and I do feel that normally, normally, someone has a mind, we have to introduce revenue. Because the average seventeen million dollars that we've been operating on for a number of years just not going to be enough fund to give, uh, us to adequately provide quality services for our citizens. Won't let normal incorporate all the history and pay classification.
All right, Councilwoman.
I have been, I have been coming to reach the department. Um, my, my committee is a bit more intricate than everyone else's. And because I have to go through, I'm the education committee. So I've been going through every department that's in the budget, finding out, have they been getting professional development where professional development has, has been needed? And the overarching thing last night at the work session was, uh, training and professional development. Chief, the chief brought it up, council members brought it up. And the overarching theme of this young man that came to present tonight was professional development training. He asked, where's your training? Uh, who's been trained? Uh, he said the council should have been trained. Uh, and so I'm looking at different levels of education and develop, uh, professional development for us to see and, uh, for whomever, especially in the area of, uh, public safety. And I hope that I can give you all, um, something, a, a good idea of where we might need, what we might need to do concerning, uh, professional, um, development. Um, because of the lack of it, I, I think it's going to cost us some money in some places because of the lack of professional development. It's important. I've said it forever. Some of you all have said it forever. It's, it's important. Uh, it's, it's, it's like, you don't, you don't want a surgeon that has been, uh, cutting with like a knife, thing that looks like a butcher knife. And you have a surgeon that's doing laser surgery now in the twenty first century. You want, you want your surgeon to go to professional development so that they can take care of you properly. Same thing with taking care of cities. So, um, I, um, I will give you, uh, what I have in my brain. Those department heads that I'm allowed to speak to, I'll just pick some, uh, I'll, I'll pick some out, Mr. President. Cause I'm not sure I can make it through all of them by the time we have our own budget here, uh, we gather together. But I'll give you a roundabout, uh, uh, I'll try to give you all a visual of what I found out.
Thank you. Councilwoman and Thomas.
Uh, Mr. Boyd, have you, uh, sent the, uh, information to Ms. Davis about what we voted on? I just want to make sure because of, uh, uh, and I'm hoping that she will come because, um, a lot of our silly, city buildings need a lot of work upgrading on right now. We got a lot of things that, um, even including in city hall, where we sitting at now in city hall, you know. We, we need to talk about how we can, um, upgrade our city hall and some of our city buildings. If we're planning on charging the rate going up, you know, we need some work done.
Thank you. At this time, children, stand.